Thank you, Madam Moderator, and welcome, West Orange, to our January 5th, 2021 Township Council Meeting. Happy New Year, and I'm going to turn it over to Madam Clerk.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 30th, 2020, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 10th, 2020. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Present.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Mayor Parisi?
Present.
Okay, the first item on our agenda this evening is nomination of Council President. So do we have a nomination for a Council President?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Matute Brown.
I would second that nomination.
Okay. And is there any other nominations this evening? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a vote on that nomination for Councilwoman Matute Brown. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Toot Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
With pleasure, yes.
Okay, wonderful. So now we will do the oath of office for the Council President. So nice.
Bear with me for one moment, I don't know. Now I'm shutting this off.
Councilwoman Matute Brown will be sworn in by her husband, Stephen Brown.
Hi, everyone. And did I unmute?
Yes, you're unmuted, I got you.
I, Cindy Matute Brown.
I, Cindy Matute Brown.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of New Jersey.
And the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state, under the authority of the people.
And in this state, under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly.
Impartially and justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
Of the office of Council President.
Of the office of Council President.
For the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. So let me just go back. And. Okay, am I still unmuted?
Yes.
Okay. So, thank you, everyone, welcome to our first meeting of this new year, 2021. Thank you for your nomination to my council colleagues and all the support that you have given me throughout these last two years, and embarking on my third year, which is insane to me that so much time has gone by. So we move on now, Madam Clerk, if you can help me to our next swearing in.
Absolutely. Councilwoman Michelle Castellino will be sworn in by Assemblyman John McKeon.
Okay, we just wait one second, my husband, there was somebody at the door. Timing's everything, I'm sorry.
It's the way of the world.
Is it Uber Eats?
Yeah, we had some food coming to the house, so sorry. A second.
That's okay.
I look pretty darn short in that picture, can we do something about that?
You do not.
I guess. We could, we could go ahead, it'll be a minute or two.
No, no, geez.
It's okay, we can wait.
Yeah, sorry, timing's everything, right?
No, it's okay.
If I could just use a second then, just to, you know, give my thanks for the service of Councilman Kukoviac, and certainly the service of Jerry Greeno, I know that he's not necessarily there tonight, but I've got this picture on my desk that I've had there for 25 years of when my 33-year-old daughter was four, when Jerry was giving her a trophy for Little Kicker, so appreciate his many, many years of service. So, and Cindy, congratulations to you, you'll be a wonderful Council President. Appreciate, we're counting on you. And pre-congratulations to Tammy Williams, and I'll have the honor to swear in Bill Richardson in a little bit, so congratulations to everybody.
Okay, we're all set.
Great.
Thank you.
That was a good filler, right?
Yes.
The Bible, we got everybody here, sorry about that, thank you.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Tony, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you all. Are you ready, Michelle?
I'm ready.
Okay. Councilwoman, I, Michelle Castellino.
I, Michelle Castellino.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
I bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Impartially.
And partially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
Of the township of West Orange.
Of the township of West Orange.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Assemblyman, thank you so much, thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. See you back. Try to make the best in this virtual world, and we thank you, everyone out there for understanding, and if I could just have a few words to always, I want to thank Assemblyman McKeon for coming on, we've been friends for a long time, you've been with me all throughout all my swearing ins, and I just appreciate it so much, always being a great friend and being there, and Mayor Parisi, and we also have Assemblywoman Myla Jacey here this evening, and always such great support, and I always appreciate, and I appreciate everyone out there who had supported me through this election, my campaign manager, Ron Charles, who worked so hard, and his wife, and a good friend Laura Lapp, also helped me on the campaign, and my treasurer Linda G. Lorenzo, and so many, just such support, and Councilwoman McCartney, and I just appreciate all the support that's been out there for me through the years, and I look forward, congratulate Tammy Williams and Bill Rutherford this evening, and I look forward to working with them, and we hope for a happy and safe and healthy new year in 2021, so thank you, West Orange, for giving me this opportunity once again. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have Councilwoman Tammy Williams, the oath being administered by Assemblywoman Myla Jacey.
Thank you, Tammy, are you ready?
I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt, Tammy, Councilwoman Williams, you're muted, could you unmute yourself before we start? Thank you.
I was gonna get her, don't worry.
I forget, Lauren, you are on it.
Councilwoman. Tammy Williams, please place your left hand on the Bible, and raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, Tammy Williams.
I, Tammy Williams.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
And partially.
Impartially.
And impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
Of the township of West Orange.
Of the township of West Orange.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. I guess we all have a couple of remarks that we'd like to say. So I will begin mine by just saying, thank you for the opportunity to serve. I am humbled and honored by this tremendous responsibility to represent the diverse voices of West Orange. I will always do my best to respond timely, listen more than I speak, and make the best decisions with the information available to continue moving our community forward. I want to thank my family for their unwavering and consistent support. I want to thank my campaign team and Cali for being the wind beneath my wings. West Orange, please know that this election has redefined our diverse suburban community, and we are rich with opportunity. Opportunity includes sound economic development, increased communication with residents, and inclusive decision-making. United, our beloved community will flourish and prosper. Please do not hesitate to reach out to me, we are in this together, and always remember my personal mantra, and that is, that everything is possible. Thank you.
Very good.
Very nice. So next on the agenda is Councilman Bill Rutherford, will take his oath, being administered by Assemblyman John McKeon. Can I get my chair? Can I get my chair? Okay. I think we're ready. Sorry, my computer lagged there for a second. I was trying to get it to go.
We didn't see Bill, or when you're ready for me, please tell me.
I'm ready when you are.
All right, Bill, thank you for the honor of administering the oath, it means very much to me. Are you ready? Okay. Please put your hand on the Bible, and raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, Bill Rutherford.
I, Bill Rutherford.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
As well as to the governments established in the United States.
As well as the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
Of the township of West Orange.
The township of West Orange.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Councilman.
Thank you very much, thank you guys, and thank you. I guess I get a chance to say thanks as well. So first, I'd like to thank Assemblyman McKeon and Assemblywoman Jacey for participating tonight, and for caring about West Orange so much, and always standing up for West Orange over these years. I also want to thank my family, my mom and my dad, my wife and my daughters, for their love and support on this journey, it's been interesting, now about seven months, and they've been just fantastic the entire way. Also, I want to thank my campaign team, Sandra Mordecai, Deborah Harvest, Nicole Bell, Christian Borges, Harry O'Motivar, and Quinia Jenkins. I want to thank some folks in town, especially those affiliated with Essex Rising and Our Revolution, as well as everyone that helped out in the campaign at all, I am grateful for this opportunity, I am really looking forward to serving the citizens of West Orange, and helping make West Orange a little bit better. I also want to thank, most of all, all of the residents of West Orange for giving me this opportunity and placing your trust in me. I would be remiss if I did not mention how historic tonight is. We are electing two African-American council members to the town council. In the history of the town, we have only had one other elected council member, and we had one appointed, I do believe Mayor Parisi was instrumental in both of those gentlemen receiving that opportunity, but to former council member Renaud Barnes, and former council member, former council member, Alonzo Webster, Senior, I am grateful for the trail that they have blazed for both Tammy and I, and we're looking forward to building on the foundation that they have already started for us, so thank you, everybody, I hope not to speak this much anymore for the rest of the night.
Thank you, everyone, congratulations to Councilwoman Williams and Councilman Rutherford, and also Councilwoman Castellino, for your hard work to be able to be the voices that our township needs to work together collectively, and united to move us forward. Our Mayor Parisi is here with us this evening, and would like to say a few words. Mayor?
Council President, just want to quickly thank Myla and John, our assembly team from this district, appreciate both of you taking the time to be here, it was joked upon earlier that you probably know the oath by heart by now, I know you guys do this a lot around the district, so we appreciate that you took the time to be with us tonight, so thank you. Also want to congratulate the new Council President. She joked earlier that it's amazing how fast the time has gone, and I think you're going to find that your year as Council President goes fast too, because there's a lot happening as Council President, and one of the things that's enjoyable in our role as the administration is we get to work closely with the Council President, and in a couple of months, you might think it's too close, but we have a lot to do, and we are looking forward to working together, as always, even in your role as council member, the administration is here to help, and you're going to work closely with us as we prepare the agenda each, each meeting, and we work to get this town through this current crisis, and on to more mundane of the routine government, but we're looking forward to working together, and as always, we're here to assist. Also want to congratulate Bill on his election to the council. I'm looking forward to working together, you're going to find in these first couple of months that there's a lot of, a lot of paperwork and a lot of information, and I just want to echo what I offered to the Council President, whatever the administration can do to, to help you figure out what's important, and what's more the mundane of everyday government, and you'll learn that pretty quick, but we're here to provide whatever assistance we can to you, and we wish you the best of luck. Tammy, I've had the pleasure with, of working with, in different roles throughout these last several years, and many of my years as mayor, and I wish you the best of luck, really happy for you, I know you have worked hard for a long time as part of this community, and we're looking forward to working together, and as, as I've offered your colleagues, whatever the administration can do to help you get through these first couple of months, the learning curve, we're looking forward to that, and looking forward to working with all of you as we kind of battle what we're currently all dealing with nationally here. And lastly, to Michelle, I want to first thank you, Michelle, you know, I don't think when you became Council President last year, any more than any of us had any indication as to what 2020 was going to bring us, we all had to learn a lot, learn things that we never, ever figured we'd have to learn as local, as local officials, but I know you worked real hard with the administration and with your colleagues, and, and more importantly, with the community that we're all here to serve, to, to get us this far through this pandemic, we have a long way to go, but I know it was not the year you bargained for, but you were, you were great in the job, and, and I think we all, not only as elected officials in the local government, but as a community, thank you for your service as Council President. And of course, I think a lot of that, your role as Council President, and your role in serving this community for years, leads me to, you know, to congratulating you on your reelection to the council. Not only did we have the challenges of governing this year, especially in the leadership position, but you managed to put a campaign together too, and, and we're successful, and we're happy for you, and as always, I'm looking forward to continuing, to work together, and lastly, and not to, not to make you feel bad, but obviously, everyone here in the administration, everyone here in this community, our hearts are with you and your family, and we wish you, we wish you all well.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Council President, I'm looking forward to working together, to all of you in council, as I mentioned, we're here to help, we're looking forward to hopefully getting through this virus sooner than later, and getting back to business, but we do have a big agenda scheduled besides that, that we'll be talking about over these coming weeks, and looking forward to working with each of you, and trying to get this town back on track and back on to normal business.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, from your lips to God's ears, it is an incredible undertaking, I know, to echo your sentiments towards Councilwoman Castellino, the pivot to virtual reality and making this pretty seamless transition for, and I hope I can speak for my council colleagues, it was a very seamless transition, and I look forward to following in some of the footsteps of the groundwork that you already laid on how to run a meeting effectively, despite all of the virtual challenges and the technology that we face, so I certainly thank you for that, and, and I have to say to you and to our Madam Clerk, thank you for your commitment and dedication to our township, you both have suffered a loss and are here, despite your personal challenges, so your courage and your commitment, I say thank you to that, I am really touched by it. I don't know if I could have done it.
Thank you, Council President.
So, and, and Mr. Mayor, you never speak long enough, because we don't have the pleasure of your presence during our meetings, but you're always welcome, and to our assembly members, it goes without saying, we are so grateful to have you and your voices represent us in Trenton, I know it is not easy, I follow your votes and, and your challenges, but I'm so grateful that we have your leadership, speaking and fighting for all of our residents, so thank you for taking the time, I know your days are busy, but happy to have you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, are we moving on to opening?
Council Liaison Appointments for 2021.
Thank you very much, okay, so I, I know, I had the opportunity to speak to most of my council colleagues, Councilwoman Williams, I called them and wasn't able to reach you, I am so sorry, and in advance of this evening's meeting, I did speak to Councilwoman McCartney and Councilwoman Castellino, and earlier this afternoon, to Councilman Bill Rutherford, some of us are already on, on some commissions that we'd like to keep, and some of, some of those others we are willing to share, there is enough work, I promise, among all of these commissions, board meetings, enough work to go around, so I'm very happy to have that conversation. I think we should start with the nomination for the planning board, and please, I'm going to ask for everyone's patience in this, as this is my first time doing this process, so I would like to have a nomination for the planning board, presently, our Councilwoman McCartney is appointed, and I understand she would like to keep that appointment as well. Is there a motion?
Any other way.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
A second?
Okay.
Can I nominate myself? Yes.
I did.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the nomination carries.
The next item, thank you, Councilwoman McCartney, the next item on the council liaison is the local assistance board, which I was appointed to, but unfortunately, because we have transitioned our assistance responsibilities to the county, we will no longer have use for this board, it was actually defunct when I was appointed, there was no reviving it, because there was just no board to speak of, so in, in discussing this with our attorney, Ken Cazer, as well as Madam Clerk, we are going to be putting forth a resolution or ordinance, I'm not sure which, to rescind the need for this board, because it's a defunct board, so we're, we'll just do away with that for today, we will not appoint anyone to this commission. The next item is the Degnan House, which Councilwoman Castellino is presently appointed to. Is there a nomination for this council liaison position, or would Councilwoman Castellino like to keep this?
So, so Councilwoman, Council President?
Yes.
So I, I would like to keep my other appointments that I'm already on, which will be coming up, which is the school board liaison, the public relations liaison, and I wanted to hopefully garner support for downtown West Orange Lion, so if, in fairness, not to have four committees to be on, if someone else would like to have, and I enjoy my time there, and, and that board is wonderful to work with, and I'll keep it if, if no one has time to, to share that responsibility, but I also realize, you know, there's, there's some new, new council members, so if anyone else would like to pick that up, I'm willing to step aside, if not, I'm more than glad to keep it as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman, I think it's an incredibly challenging role, particularly in the time of COVID, your voices are all relevant on, as council liaison, so I would hope that one of our, if, if one of our new council members would like to assume that as a liaison role, would you like to self-nominate or show interest? Councilman Rutherford, or Councilwoman Williams, and I'm not calling Councilwoman McCartney, because she's appointed to the Rena House.
So I'm more than glad to, to, to hold on to that responsibility.
Michelle, I'm going to nominate you to stay at the Rena, at the Degnan House.
I want to just be sure that Councilwoman Williams or Councilmember Rutherford, if they had interest. Okay, so I second Councilwoman McCartney's nomination.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
The next matter for council liaison is the John P. Rena House, which currently Councilwoman McCartney sits as liaison, I would like to have a discussion to see if, Councilwoman, you would like to continue to serve, or if you are willing to, if there is interest, to share that position.
So, Council President, you know I definitely would like to continue to serve, we have been delivering dinners there and lunches with the sir team for many, many months. Of course, if another council person wants to, I mean, that has stopped, but now we are doing a lot of senior programming there, and I, I would continue, so.
Councilwoman Williams?
Hi, I am more than happy to take on the Rena House.
Is is that okay, Councilwoman McCartney?
It is okay. I can still stay deeply involved with the Rena House.
I nominate Councilwoman Williams as the council liaison for the Rena House.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried.
Thank you. The next council liaison appointment is for the downtown West Orange Alliance. That was formerly council, former council member Guarino's appointment. So I know that Councilwoman Castellino has expressed interest, but we're here to have a discussion if if you want to self nominate? Or is if there's someone that wants to support Councilwoman Castellino? Councilman Bill Rutherford?
Yes, I would like to serve on that board. I have a vision for the Main Street corridor. I've done some work in the Valley Arts District. That part of town, I think, represents a tremendous opportunity, especially now in COVID. We've got a lot of work to do. I'm interested in really getting in and being down there. I'd love to 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 work in that capacity.
Can we have a nomination?
Well, I'd also like to nominate myself. I I had wanted to, I've worked with downtown in the past, doing multiple volunteer work for them throughout my council tenure. And I, you know, Councilman Guarino had held on to the position for a while and I had wanted it earlier. I am the one council person that, or only council person that lives down in the downtown area. And I would like this year to have the opportunity to be the representative for us.
Okay, so I'll go through. We have two nominations. First nominations, one for Michelle and one for Councilman Rutherford. So I will ask for a second nomination for, I guess, Michelle, Councilwoman Castellino?
I will second that nomination.
Okay.
Thank you.
And is there a second? You know what, Ken? Is Ken there?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm probably muted.
Okay, I just have a, we have, we have two nominations, you know, self nominations, one for Councilwoman Castellino, one for Councilman Rutherford.
Correct.
Council President Matu Brown did a second for Councilwoman Castellino. Do I ask for a second for Councilman Rutherford? Or do, like, how does that work?
I think you could do it either way, but you need to take a vote and see which gets a majority.
Okay, so I'll ask for a second nomination for Councilman Rutherford then.
Correct.
And then we'll do the vote. Okay, is there a second nomination for Councilman Rutherford?
I'll second that nomination.
Okay. So I'm going to go through a roll call vote for Councilwoman Castellino. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
I'm going to say yes for Michelle. I have wanted to serve on the downtown alliance since John Scarbnick. And I work closely with Meghan and the downtown alliance through the chamber. So I would, I know Michelle has been deeply involved with that as well. So I would second Michelle.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilman Rutherford?
No.
Okay, and Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Okay, so there.
Thank you.
All right, so that's four yeses. So that would make, that would give Michelle, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Castellino the the vote?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. I'm just, I always get a little confused by this, so, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion is carried for Councilwoman Castellino.
Thank.
The next, thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item is the municipal alliance committee. I am presently appointed to that committee. They meet quarterly. We recently started a new project that I would like to see through. And when I was appointed to this committee, it was also a committee that was pretty defunct, simply because there was a transition in positions at the township level. And I believe that we have worked very hard to make sure that we are now having meetings. There is certainly accountability for the public funds that the alliance members utilize. So I would like to nominate myself to keep that that role.
Is there, is there a second? Or is there another nomination someone would like to make? Is there a second on that?
Yes, I would second Cindy being there. And thank you for resurrecting that. I served on that for many years as well.
Okay. Okay, I assume that's the only nomination that's being made? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried.
Thank you. The next council liaison appointment is the West Orange Arts Council. And presently, Councilwoman McCartney serves on the Arts Council. I understand that Councilwoman McCartney does have interest to continue to serve as the liaison to the Arts Council.
Yes, thank you, Council President, for that preface.
You're you're welcome. Is there, is there interest for a nomination for Councilwoman McCartney to continue to serve?
Is there a nomination?
Oh, I'll second that.
We need a first and a second.
Oh, I'll first. Sorry, I paid attention.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried.
The next council liaison appointment is for the Open Space and Recreation Committee. That was chaired for, the liaison was former Councilman Kokorviak. Would anyone like to assume that council liaison? Councilman Rutherford? Thank you. I nominate Councilman Rutherford for the Open Space and Recreation Committee.
Is there a second?
Yes, Karen, I would.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried.
Thank you. The next item for council liaison appointment is the Public Relations Commission. Currently, Councilwoman Castellino serves on this and has expressed a desire to continue to serve.
Thank you.
Has expressed a desire to continue to serve as Public Relations Commission liaison. Councilwoman?
I I'm also interested in that liaison position. Okay, I would like to self nominate.
Okay.
Council, Councilwoman Castellino, you are you?
Yeah, I'm going to self nominate because I was thinking of passing this along this year. And and the reason why I'm gonna, I like to keep it for one more year is because of the year of this past year. And the commission, we were trying to get it rebooted up with the virtual. How can I put it? It was just hard to operate with the with the virtual online. So I I just didn't want to leave it where it was. So I'd just like to just meet with the commissioners and and try to move it forward this year and give it, you know, just finish some projects up that we didn't get to do because of the pandemic.
Is there a second nomination for Councilwoman Williams?
I'll second.
Okay. And is there a second nomination for Councilwoman Castellino?
I'll second.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to do a roll call vote for Councilwoman Williams. Hang on just one second. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes. Wait, wait for, I'm sorry.
For Councilwoman Williams.
Oh, I'm sorry. Unfortunately, no, no.
Okay, Councilwoman McCartney?
No.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
No.
Okay. Now we'll do a roll call for Councilwoman Castellino. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
No.
Councilwoman Williams?
No.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes.
Okay, so the nomination goes to Councilwoman Castellino.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Oscar Schindler Performing Arts Center is the next council liaison appointment. I served on on this board as I created the board. We took some time, unfortunately, longer than than anticipated in actually ensuring that there were the right number and the right category of board members to provide oversight to the management of the Oscar Schindler Performing Arts Center. And I have expressed interest in wanting to continue my council liaison appointments for the BOSS PAC. So I am self nominating for for this position.
Okay. I'll second that, Council President. You did a really nice job there. And I'll second that for you.
Okay. All in favor?
Thank you. Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried.
The next council liaison appointment would be for the West Orange Board of Education, which currently Councilmember Castellino sits as a liaison. I know that you have also expressed interest in maintaining this position. Is that still your position, Councilwoman?
Yeah, yeah, yes, Council President. And reason being, like I said, I was willing to give up one of my committees because I don't have a problem sharing the responsibility of my 10 years' experience as a school board member, working with the superintendent this past year. There's a lot, what we do on that is a lot with our facilities, with our rec program, and very in tune with the policies of the facilities, of the school board. And our, on the school board side of the facilities, a director had retired this year. They had a lot of retirees. So I'd like to continue my my work there on the school board as as I've been working with the superintendent and the school board members.
I just want to add to that, Councilwoman Castellino. You know that I initially was interested also in serving in this position, but also appreciating the institutional knowledge that you bring to the support of Dr. Cascon's, but specifically during these times of transitions. So I support your maintaining that position and nominate you to hold that council liaison position as well.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I will oppose because it is four appointments for her. You know, I think there are, I think we could, you know, spread out the work a little bit better. But that is my reason for opposing.
Okay, so you're going to say no?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And just a note, Councilman, I I was willing to give up one of my committees.
I do understand and appreciate that expression, Councilman Rutherford. There are other opportunities as well in addition to what is listed. And I was going to discuss those as soon as we go through these. There's at least three other council appointments that we will discuss, hopefully in the second meeting of January, I believe. No, it'll probably be the first because it has to go through first reading and second reading. I, we've discussed and requested additional appointments to other commissions.
Right.
And boards.
Yeah.
So there will be enough for everyone to have, you know, three or four of that they're choosing. It is not mine. I do not want to carry more than three because of the responsibilities of being council president and being new to this added responsibility. So while there are some I want to, you know, explore, those are some that I'm going to leave for anyone else who would like. But certainly understand, Councilman. The next is the Joint Meeting Commission. And this commission, council liaison, deals with, and correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Clerk or Attorney Kizer, the water and sewage plant. And it's a commission with about 11 different municipalities and I think two or three counties. So if anyone has interest, this was formerly, okay, thank you, Councilman Rutherford. I will nominate Councilman Rutherford for the liaison position for Joint Meeting Commission. It's a two-year appointment.
Correct. Is there a second?
Thank you.
You're going to second, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried.
The next council liaison appointment is the West Orange Historic Preservation Commission. That was also chaired by former Councilman Kokorviak. Is anyone interested in nominating for that, Councilwoman Williams?
I'd like to self nominate, please.
I will second that nomination.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next is the Pedestrian Safety Committee. That was also formerly, the council liaison was former Councilman Guarino. And while I initially expressed interest, I, again, I want to be able to allow for others to have that opportunity, should they want it. Councilman Bill Rutherford? I nominate Councilman Bill Rutherford for the Pedestrian Safety Committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried.
And the next is the Municipal Insurance Fund. This I presently sit on. And for Councilmember Guarino was also, it's two appointments to this liaison position. It's a two-year term. You meet, I want to say quarterly or as needed. And you review and discuss insurance claims and our workers' comp claims. I am, is my turn, and please help me clarify this, is my term up this or this time around?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so two people would have to be nominated for this.
Councilwoman Williams?
If you are willing, I will nominate Council President Cindy Matu Brown to continue to serve on that commission or as a liaison.
Okay, we need to, thank you, Councilwoman Williams.
I'll second that.
And who else are we nominating?
Don't everybody jump at once.
Councilman? Okay, do we have a nomination? You'll self nominate and then?
I'll second Mr. Rutherford.
Okay.
Rutherford.
Okay, so is there, I guess we'll do them both together for Councilman Rutherford and Council President Matu Brown? Is there any opposition to that?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay.
So, Madam Clerk, I would like to add the West Orange Environmental Commission to this.
We cannot do that. We have to, that was one of the, the, we have to do that by ordinance. So until, no, to add a liaison, to add a liaison.
That's not written in the ordinance?
No.
I don't believe so.
No.
There's a few ordinances that were discussed that need to be amended before we can add a liaison. And I believe that was one of them.
I will just continue to serve then since 2007.
Well, I think that was one of the ones, Council President, that we were talking about.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
It is the Environmental Commission, the Rent Leveling Board, which is also something that I'm particularly interested in having council discussion on and as well as a council liaison appointment, that there there does not exist one. So we have discussed adding that, but that can only be done by ordinance. So that's also an additional opportunity. Councilwoman Williams, I saw your hand up.
Yes, I also wanted to add discussion on adding as a liaison appointment, the Human Relations Commission.
Yes, that's also the other, the other. So there is the rent leveling, the HRC, and the Open Space Committee. Those do not have council liaison representation and would benefit from them, in my opinion. And it's something that we we discussed. So what we'll So what will happen is that since, since it sounds like there's a council majority support for amending the ordinance, then we can forward this to our legal department, ask them to amend those ordinances. Madam Clerk, correct?
Yes.
And, and so we will have to have a first reading, which will happen as soon as the legal department amends those ordinances, and then a second reading the following meeting. And then, I'm not sure if appointments can be done during the second app liaison, I'm sorry, the second reading?
I believe so. No, I believe.
I think, Council President, I think we can do them when we have it on, when we approve on second reading. And it'll probably take three ordinances, one for each of the commissions. And we'll work on that.
Right.
Okay. I don't think I'm leaving any of the other commissions out that we discussed, so.
I don't believe so. I think that was it.
Open Space Commission and
That's already on there.
The HRC was discussed.
Right.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you.
I just, I want to just make sure that everyone has, you know, at least one council liaison and that no one is feeling overwhelmed with the council liaison positions that they have currently.
Is it possible for you to repeat the order that has been allocated?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, thank you.
Sure. Okay, so for Planning Board, Councilwoman McCartney. For the Degnan House, Councilwoman Castelino. For the Rena House, Councilwoman Williams. Downtown West Orange Alliance, Councilwoman Castelino. West Orange Municipal Alliance, Council President Matute Brown. West Orange Arts Council, Councilwoman McCartney. Open Space and Recreation Committee, Councilman Rutherford. Public Relations Commission, Councilwoman Castelino. OSPEC, Councilwoman Matute Brown. West Orange Board of Education, Councilwoman Castelino. Joint Meeting Commission, Councilman Rutherford. West Orange Historic Preservation Commission, Councilwoman Williams. Pedestrian Safety Committee, Councilman Rutherford. And Municipal Insurance Fund, Councilman Rutherford and Council President Matute Brown.
Is everyone okay with all of their liaison appointments? Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much, everyone, for the patience in discussing these liaison appointments. And once we are able to amend the other ordinances, we'll revisit the liaison appointments for your interest as well. Thank you once again. So what is next on our agenda?
Update for redevelopment?
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Sayers, are you, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here. As of December 31, 2020, there are 245 leased apartments in the downtown, downtown. It's up to 245 leased apartments. And I didn't get any information on where they're going with phase two because I was unable to get direct contact with Mr. Diaz before the meeting. So when I do, I will get that information to you.
Thank you for the update. Is there, I'm sorry, Councilman Rutherford?
I just wanted to know how many total units are in that property?
I'm not sure how many are in there, to be quite honest with you.
333.
333? Okay. 333, and there's 245 that are leased.
Thank you.
Okay. And we are, right, Councilwoman Castelino, I know that she has been working with Mr. Diaz to come in and do a presentation for the sound?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna re, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, go ahead.
No, I just said I hope that would happen soon.
Thank you. Council President, can I interject?
Yes, please.
So, yeah, so I'm going to speak with him. I also had a great conversation with Mr. Diaz about a week or so ago, asking him to send a representative to the downtown alliance meetings so they could get more, they could get more involved with working on downtown Main Street. And he was very excited about that opportunity. So I will be following up with him. And he, you know, I'll have some, it'd be great to have some representation at the downtown meetings with someone from his organization. They are, they do own a lot of real estate on Main Street. And it will be good to have him as an active partner as we move forward developing Main Street. So I'll keep everyone in the loop.
Thank you, Councilwoman, for the initiative on reaching out. I think that that would be a wonderful addition, particularly since they are right on Main Street and look forward to updates on how that develops. Thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk, now are we moving on to council liaisons?
Yes, council liaison announcements.
Okay.
And I think we are doing them in order of the roll call. So Councilwoman Castelino.
Okay.
Liaison announcements.
So I have two slides. So we're very gracious to our county partners for having the West Orange Kmart as a vaccination site. There's all questions about vaccine and a lot of information on our website. So I just wanted to post it tonight. I'm not sure Mr. Pablicy is going to be on the call tonight or not. But, you know, information is out there. You can look to the county website to make an appointment, to see where you fall in the order. So I hope that you are going out there, making your appointment and getting vaccinated. Very important to keep everyone safe. And please remember, please, please, social distance, wear your mask and stay safe. This pandemic has been really tough for so many. And, you know, just keep being diligent, folks, just keep, I pray that you keep diligent. And with that, next, you know, some of us, if you have your tree up, you're going to decorate and bring it to the curb. The township asks that you don't have any plastic wrap and try not to leave any little ornaments on it. I know sometimes I've forgotten ornament or two in the years past, but definitely no plastic wrap. Just bring it out to the curb. And by January 15th, our good folks at the West Orange Public Works will be picking that up for you. And just real quick, I just want to, again, congratulate Council President Matute Brown. And I really, I want to thank the administration for the past year, the opportunity of being the council president, for all their help. Madam Clerk, you're always wonderful. And our new council people to, you know, reach out to our Madam Clerk. She does a wonderful job for us. And she's such a great support for us and all the administration. I have to thank them. And Madam Moderator, you have done a wonderful job. I cannot fulfill my council presidency without you virtually. And thank you for all your support this past year. You've been really, really wonderful and we're really lucky. So thank you for the job that you do for us.
Thank you. That's very kind. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
I, Council President, thank you. Just one last thing, too. I have to be remiss when I made some, said some thank yous before. And even, I'm sure my colleagues will concur to this. You know, we can never do this job without our families. And I was remiss, I didn't thank them before. And our families give us the time that we could go out and serve the public. So I just have to thank my wonderful family. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castelino. Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you. All right. That's with the West Orange Environmental Commission. So this is one of our West Orange High School students. Regal had a, her manuscript published by the publisher is a New Degree Press. It will be coming out in April on the Gen Z generation, all about what influences this Generation Z influences and things that are on their mind. So we wanted to congratulate her. She has been a liaison for the past few years and is very active in town. And I'm, the picture that Michelle just had up about the, oh, just prior to that, Michelle had the trees up, another backstory with the, I'd love to share this story with you, that there was another West Orange High School graduate that went on to graduate from Syracuse and then had an internship with Carnegie Mellon. And he now has a patent, he's a co-founder of a company called Farm to Flame Energy. And what we are trying to work out with the DPW is to collect these trees because his patent is to convert this to energy. And he has a plant already outs in Carney's Point, outside of Jersey City. And I just think it's just a wonderful idea. And he's holding the patent. And I hope that this partnership can, can work for him. So thank you.
Thank you.
I had mentioned before about I am a little disappointed I'm not a pregnant house because I did form many relationships there and enjoy working with the seniors there. Safety measures are still in place at the Rena House. And what the recommendations now for seniors, or not at the Rena House, any senior in town, if they would like to receive information about senior services, to contact Laura Van Dyke and Noelia Perez are senior coordinators at 3254105. This picture here is Fire Captain Abdur Yazin and Director of the Community Emergency Response Team, SERC team, Ken Steele, recognizing some of the members from the SERC team. Saturday, we're at the paddle boats pavilion at the South Mountain Recreation Complex. It was unseasonably warm. And there are little gift bags there, a SERC pin, and of course, masks and hand sanitizers. So everyone was actively involved for the past 10 months. Thank you. Oh, this sounds very exciting. This is the Chamber Biz 2.0, coordinated by Arnie Amir. He has, he was able to secure this guest speaker, David Sanderson. David was the last person to get off of the US, I'm reading right here now, US Air Flight 1549. A movie went on to be made about Captain Sully landing that Miracle on Hudson. And it just seems like a very inspirational speak, speech. So this will be on January 12th at noon. It is virtual, so I invite everyone to visit westorangechamber.com. That West Orange is spelled out, westorangechamber.com to register and to learn more about that and to learn more about the chamber. This is with the West Orange Arts Council. This is an upcoming exhibition of found art, creating these very interesting sculptures. And there are quite a few that have come in already. And the Arts Council, again, I have, there is so much. They, the term that they're using is art heals what life deals. And if you go to the website, woarts.org, there are plenty of exhibitions and, or exhibits and workshops that the Arts Council has continued to maintain of keeping the community engaged. So visit woarts.org. Anything else? Planning Board meets tomorrow evening at 7:30. There were still, of course, virtual. So visit westorange.org for information on the Zoom. The agenda, we start at 7:30, and there are upgrades to the Aaron's Market on Eagle Rock Avenue. That's what's on the agenda. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. And I think that we can now move on to public comments at this time. Oh, Councilwoman Williams? You are on mute.
Thank you. Before we move on to public comment, I just wanted to notify the public that the Human Relations Commission is planning still for a virtual Martin Luther King Day celebration. And that will be on January 18th at 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. So information will be posted on the West Orange website as well as the Human Relations Facebook page. So please tune in. It will be a mash of the previous four years of MLK celebrations in addition to acknowledging the restaurants, vendors, businesses in the community, and individuals of selection who have gone above and beyond the call of duty to serve during this COVID pandemic. So I hope residents of West Orange will feel obliged to tune in and dial or Zoom in at 10 o'clock on January 18th. And then, of course, after that date, it will be available for a public consumption. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. And I did not intend to Zoom right along. I forget that typically during public comment, do you share that information? So thank you very much. Madam Clerk, we are now opening public meeting. You're, you are on mute.
Do that all the time, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
We, as we discussed, I'm going to open up the meeting for, that was recessed from December 15th. But we're going to immediately recess that until the 26th of January. And then I'll open the public meeting for this evening. So this is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 31st, 2019, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 7th, 2019. Councilwoman Castelino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Present.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Council President Matute Brown?
Present.
Okay, is there a motion to recess this meeting until January 26th, 2021?
No move. Second.
Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes, sorry.
That's okay. Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is carried. And now I'm going to open up tonight's public meeting. This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 30th, 2020, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 10th, 2020. Councilwoman Castelino?
Present.
Councilwoman, I'm sorry, I must have put this in before I knew about the council presidency. Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Present.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Council President Matute Brown?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbridled, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Lauren?
Yes.
Hi, if you could do, please explain to the public how they can participate in public comment. And if there is a need for council members thereafter to respond or if they would like to respond, those responses will be provided to the public at the end and the close of public comments.
Great, thank you. Yes, as the President said, it is now time for public comment. If you would like to speak, you can use the Raise Your Hand feature located at the bottom of your screen. And if you're one of our dial-in callers, it is star nine, and you only have to press it once. And you can push the Raise Your Hand button now. You do not have to wait for anyone to finish speaking. You are put in a queue. And at this time, Joe Fagan, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and Happy New Year to you.
Happy New Year.
Good evening, Madam Council President. Thank you, Lauren. Good evening, Madam Council President, and Happy New Year to you as well. As we begin your term as Council President, I would like to wish you all the best for continuing success. for continuing success in the upcoming year. Would also like to take this opportunity to welcome Councilwoman Williams and Councilman Rutherford to their new positions. And of course, welcome Councilwoman Castellino back. I hope at some point in the near future, all council members can take their seats once again inside council chambers to conduct the town's business. Briefly, I would like to echo Mayor Parisi's earlier remarks with condolences to Councilwoman Castellino with the passing of her mother and also to Madam Clerk for the recent passing of her father. I have just a few brief announcements. I spoke to Chief Abbott earlier, I, I spoke to Chief Abbott earlier today about what seems to be an uptick in auto break-ins and vandalism in West Orange. Chief Abbott informed me that this is actually part of an ongoing problem statewide and not unique just to West Orange. Local police agencies are working together as part of a cooperated, cooperative, ongoing investigation and are following several credible leads. There is no immediate threat to public safety and residents are reminded to always lock their car doors because auto break-ins are often a crime of opportunity. Be vigilant and report any suspicious activity to the West Orange Police at 973-325-4000 or certainly dial 911 to report any emergencies. I would also like to remind residents that their cooperation is appreciated if they are called by a contact tracer regarding COVID. Contact tracing saves lives and all information is kept strictly confidential. Finally, just as a reminder, town residents can monitor our Facebook page or website at westorange.org for all the latest updated official nation, official information regarding any town issues. Thank you, Madam Council President.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe.
And next, it's listed as Essex County NJ Chapter on the Zoom. If we can have your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Dr. Karma Brown Warren. And as President of the Essex County, New Jersey Chapter, The Links Incorporated, we wish to congratulate Councilwoman Tammy Williams on her election to the West Orange Municipal Council. As the first elected Black Councilwoman, Tammy's perseverance that the unifying message of progress, that brilliance can be colored in black and fitted in heels and skirt. I salute this worthy public servant and pledge our chapter to work with her and your council to continue to improve the communities that we serve. But on behalf of my husband, Mayor Dwayne Warren and I, we want to personally congratulate Pastor Bill Rutherford on his election to the West Orange Municipal Council. As community leader and pastor, he is sure to continue the service to the residents of the West Orange with distinction. Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Oh, I went backwards. Next, please, can we have Joyce Harley? If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good afternoon, good evening, everyone. I am Joyce Wilson Harling, proud resident of the Township of West Orange at 513 Smith Manor Boulevard. I am a past president of the Association of Black Women Lawyers in New Jersey, founder of the Bibliophiles, a member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, the Montclair Drifters, coach for Girls on the Run at the Kelly School, a member, proud member of the Essex County Chapter of The Links, the National Council Negro Women, Negro Business and Professional Women, the Northeasterners, and the immediate past Black History Chair for the West Orange African Heritage Organization. I cite my affiliations, I do not speak for those organizations, but I just wanted to let Councilwoman Williams know that every single person that I've worked with in each of these organizations has asked me to send you their congratulations on your historic achievement by being elected to the West Orange Town Council. We are so proud of you. We've got great expectations for you. And we know that based on your track record of success in every single endeavor you've undertaken, that those expectations will be met. So we wish you and your council members Godspeed. We offer you our support. And I would be remiss if I didn't offer congratulations to Councilwoman Castellino. I understand and know the work that you did to make sure that the memory of our local hero CJ Morgan was honored. He died very young, left too soon, but will never be forgotten. So thank you also for you and congratulations on your reelection. We just look forward to working with the Township Council to make sure that West Orange is always, always on the top of the hill. Thank you, God bless you, please take care and stay safe. And Rita Salas did ask me to let you know, Councilwoman Williams, that the women of color in investments are so proud of you and wish you the absolute best of everything. So thank you and congratulations.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Dr. Janice Johnson Dias. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, 272 St. Cloud Avenue. Congratulations, Tammy. I am so excited for you and for this historic win and what it means for you, your family and our town. Your presence on the council will suggest to some that a long awaited change is here. But time will tell if this is true. As you already know, your presence will be met with excitement by some, sadness by others. But your presence is not what we need. We need your leadership. We need your commitment to equity. We need you to be more than present. We need you to collaborate, reform, remove and usher in a new, better and more equitable way of life for all the residents of our town. Shakespeare wrote, uneasy is the head that wears the crown. Luckily, we are not in a monarch, we are a republic and we can be a democracy. So be easy with yourself. Know that making mistakes is a part of the journey that you have ahead and an important part of your humanity. Do not fall victim to those who will seek to see you under a microscope of speculation. Embrace your humanity, shine brightly as I know you will and let your desire to learn, your faith, your knowledge and your commitment to justice guide you. This win means Black girls and women will see themselves in you. It means that we will see what ambition looked like up close. It means they will come to know that ambition is not a simple word just for men or members of the majority culture. Your win means that members of the majority culture will have to evaluate and reevaluate how they see women, Black folk and mothers. This win is a part of your birthright for all our ancestors who built this country, this town and this world. Congratulations. I am confident that you will make us all very proud. Best wishes, my friend.
Thank you. Next, we have Kathy Williams. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please, and give us your name and address for the record.
Kathy Williams, 665 Tenet Road, Manalapan. Electwomen New Jersey is thrilled to support Councilwoman Tammy Williams. As I said, I am Kathy Williams and I am a founding board member of Electwomen New Jersey. We are an organization that raises money to invest in strong woman candidates in New Jersey races, women like Councilwoman Williams. Councilwoman Williams' win is an historic one as she becomes the first Black Councilwoman elected in West Orange. Electwomen New Jersey knows that increasing the numbers and diversity of women in elected office changes government for the better. Research has shown that women legislators sponsor and pass more bills compared to their male counterparts. More women and diversity in leadership increases innovation. Help our governing bodies to create solutions that are just and effective. Tammy Williams is coming to office with deep experience in governance and business and a commitment to her community. Electwomen New Jersey was proud to endorse Tammy Williams. And we look forward to seeing how her service will benefit West Orange. I must also note that Tammy and I are sorority sisters representing the Pi Theta Omega Chapter of the esteemed Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, where we also share a sisterhood and bond with our Vice President-elect Kamala Harris. West Orange, you have chosen a good one. Congratulations, Tammy.
Okay, thank you. And next, it's just listed as West Orange Town Council Meeting. I have to promote you over to a panelist because you have a, an older version of Zoom. So I'm just going to bring you over and then I'll take off your video, just give me one second. And okay, you're all set, we have your name and address for the record.
Rosary Morelli, Ralph Road.
Okay, you're all set, Rosely.
Okay, congratulations to the new council members and the new president and to all of you a happy and a healthy new year. Tonight, I'm going to read an editorial published in the December 17th edition of the West Orange Chronicle, which I feel so compelled to read. This is December 17th, opinion page editorial quote from beginning to end. Now is the time to be a good neighbor. One of the most important aspects of any community is that neighbors watch out for neighbors. This is especially important regarding senior citizens. This is not a derogatory term. It simply refers to people getting on in their years or entering the latter segment of their lives. Many so-called senior citizens are real go-getters who are full of energy and very involved in many activities. But there are also many who don't get out much and don't have many friends or family members who stop by. Good neighbors help them out, though, and that's where you come into the picture. It's not that difficult to spot signs that an older neighbor may need your help. They may drive, they may drive erratically or have damage to their vehicle. They may suddenly appear unkempt. Their pets may be left out all night to bark or no longer taken for walks. No lights may be on in their property at night, which may be a sign that their power is off. They may fail to put out trash for the weekly pickup. Their mailbox may be overflowing. Some of these signs could mean they're away on vacation or at someone's house. However, I know something more serious. According to an article at senioradviser.com in 2014, approximately 12.5 million US seniors lived alone, including nearly half of American women ages 75 or older. Most people do not like to admit that they're having problems. So if you want to offer help, be tactful. Find out that your neighbor has family members. Find out if your neighbor has family members. You can contact so they can arrange for help. If your neighbor belongs to a religious congregation, contact their office and see if they have resources that can help for seniors at home. If your neighbor is truly isolated, reach out to the local area agency on aging and find out what services it can provide. Of course, due to the pandemic, precautions should be taken when reaching out to your neighbor. Try contacting them by phone or other technology. If this proves ineffective and you need to talk to them in person, make sure you're wearing protective face coverings and staying the appropriate distance away. The organizations you contact on their behalf will follow the same safety guidelines if they can offer help. COVID is no reason to stop being a good neighbor, more now. Do the right thing and be a good neighbor today. Well, in our township, I do know there were many folks who were good neighbors. I was and still am one of the folks who is fortunate enough and blessed to have caring friends and along with good neighbors. There are some of our elected officials who I know were good neighbors, were good neighbors doing this epidemic. Councilwoman McCartney and Castellino were out there delivering food to seniors and Laura Van Dyke, our senior director, senior, our Director of Senior Services and her assistant, Noelia Perez and Dorothy Sanders, the Holy Trinity Church.
Rosely, we're having a little connection issues.
Volunteers Cynthia Cummings and Chris Tabinsky, others, who all made sure that West Orange missed anybody because there were why? Am I okay?
Yeah, you're just coming in and out a little bit.
It might be my modem, I think. Okay, for those of you who know me, and that's probably every resident in township, they know it's been my passion and my quest to make our township a community. I offer my personal thanks to all our good neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and I'm gonna move you back over to an attendee. Okay, and next, we have Tanisha Gibbs. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening. My name is Tanisha Gibbs and my address is 239 40th Street condo 27 Irvington, New Jersey. Good evening, Madam Council President. Congratulations to all council persons that were recently elected, especially Councilwoman Williams, and greetings to all esteemed guests. The Bible says in Proverbs 2717, as iron sharpens iron, so a man sharpens another. When we think of this scripture, we think of someone who strengthens us, motivates us and genuinely desires better for our lives. Tammy, my dearest sister, my dear soror, you are that iron. You are a woman of integrity. Your faith is unwavering and your character is rock solid. Your spirit of positivity always emanates optimism. As your mantra states, everything is possible with Tammy Williams. And on this notable occasion of your installation, I bring congratulations to my big sister. As one of my mentors, you've continuously added value to my life. So I find it only besitting that in January, National Mentoring Month and also the occasion of our sorority's illustrious Founder's Day, which is coming up in a few days. And also on the occasion of when our soror Vice President-elect, Sor Kamala Harris will be taking office and will be installed as well on January 20th. I just want to let you know that I am so proud of you. As you've added to my life, I know you will do the same for your constituents. And I'm elated for this next chapter of your life. Soror Councilwoman Tammy Williams, congratulations.
Thank you. And next, we have Kabria Myers. If you can follow the prompt on your screen. Kabira, I'm sorry, I'm pronouncing.
That's okay.
I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone. Can, can I be heard? Can you hear me?
Yes, you're good, thanks.
I'm always paranoid about that when I get on Zoom. Good, good evening, everyone. And congratulations to our newly elected town council members, Honorable Williams, as well as Honorable Rutherford, as well as to Honorable Castellino, congratulations on your reelection. As an Essex Rising co-founder, I'm especially delighted to see sitting on the dais, Honorable Bill Rutherford. So congratulations once again and Happy New Year to everyone.
Ms. Myers, I'm sorry, before you continue, can we just have your name and address for the record?
Oh, my Lord, I always forget to do that. I, I live on Marion Drive here in West Orange.
Thanks.
And again, I'm Kabira Myers. So I'm here to talk about the rent leveling board. So I don't know if people are aware of this, but the Township of West Orange, the housing stock in the Township of West Orange is at least 30% rental housing. Yet there seems to be a dearth of attention given to West Orange renters in this township. And you would think that that number is much lower. West Orange renters make valuable tax contributions to the town. And the rent leveling board, which I sit on, I've been sitting on the rent leveling board for, I believe, the past two years. has not had a single meeting since I've been a member of that board. It's extremely important that our renters, our Western renters are aware of not only the fact that there is a rent control ordinance in the township of West Orange that keeps rent affordable and that prevents, that helps to prevent displacement, but they should also be made aware of the protections of that rent leveling ordinance. So it's extremely important that the empty seats on the rent leveling board be immediately filled so that we can immediately have an informational meeting for our residents. You know, right now, we're facing, we're in the middle of a pandemic, which has had devastating financial impacts on everyone for the most part, but especially on our renters of low income. You know, we're in the middle of an eviction crisis. In the state of New Jersey, we fortunately have a moratorium that prevents tenants from, most tenants from being evicted. But once that moratorium is lifted, we're possibly going to see an avalanche of evictions in the state of New Jersey. So it's so important that our renters are made aware of the protections that are available to them, not only during COVID, but post-COVID. So it behooves us to pay more attention to the fact that West Orange is a township made of a large portion of renters. Again, 30% of West Orange housing stock is rental housing. Additionally, I noticed on the on the agenda, tonight's agenda, Resolution 7-21, which allows our town to apply for and accept CDBG funds. And the Act associated with the Housing and Community Development Act allows CDBG funds to go towards community services for low and moderate income persons or households. I ask that a portion of those funds go towards a rental assistance program for West Orange tenants. I'm a tenant defense attorney by profession. I see on a daily basis the devastating impact that the COVID the COVID crisis has had on renters in the state of New Jersey financially. Renters are not able to pay the rent. A large portion of renters are simply not able to pay the rent. And as a result of that, a lot of small landlords are not able to pay their mortgages. It behooves us as a town to do what we can to ensure that we provide some sort of rental assistance to our tenants who are facing, who are facing financial difficulties. I also, it is my understanding that more than 100 West Orange families receive Section 8 vouchers. That's a statistic that not a lot of people know about. So again, please let's put more attention to our tenants. Let's get some appointments to fill those empty seats on the rent leveling board. And let's get a meeting and informational meeting started for our residents as soon as possible. And I nominate Council President Matute Brown to be the upcoming liaison, once the ordinance is passed, to make that happen. I believe she has compassion and she has an incredible wealth of knowledge on rental protections for tenants. So thank you so much and Happy New Year to everyone.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Carolyn Wright Hopkins. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Carolyn Wright Hopkins from Emerson Court in Morris Township, New Jersey. Good evening again. I bring you greetings on behalf of the members of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Pi Theta Omega Chapter. We congratulate our member and former chapter president Tammy Williams on her election and this evening's swearing in to the West Orange Township Council. Through her work in the sorority and throughout the community, Councilwoman Tammy Williams has proven herself to be a dedicated, hardworking servant leader with proven results. We know that she will serve the residents of West Orange Township in her new position with excellence, and she will continue to make us all proud. Congratulations, Councilwoman Tammy Williams. Your sisters of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Pi Theta Omega Chapter, support you and continue to wish you all the best. Thank you all so very much.
Thank you. And next we have Lady Trish Sipio. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, yes. Good evening. My name is Lady Tricia Sipio at 7 Pleasant Avenue, Montclair, New Jersey. I currently serve as the president of the Women of Essex Incorporated. On behalf of my distinguished colleagues serving in the Women of Essex, we wish to convey our sheer delight and heartfelt congratulations to Councilwoman Tammy Williams on this most historic occasion and celebration of your pioneering milestone achievement as the first African-American woman elected to serve as a member of the West Orange Municipal Township Council. Year 2020 on many fronts, including electoral politics, certainly has been the year of the woman. Councilwoman Williams' hard-fought victory on Election Day is clear affirmation that women are continuing to break barriers locally, regionally, and on the national stage. The Women of Essex was organized under sponsorship of the Men of Essex, an African-American organization founded in 1958 who bestowed recognition on scholar athletes. But the Women of Essex is an African-American service organization of business and professional women whose primary mission is to recognize and support Essex County students with a documented learning difference, who have demonstrated perseverance and committed to achievement and providing them with financial assistance in their pursuit of higher education aspirations. Our goal is to increase the candidate pool of students from our community who are prepared to thrive in our global society. Councilwoman Tammy Williams, as the first African-American woman to hold this office in the township and as a woman of the people and as a principled and dedicated public servant whose track record of issues of social justice is unsurpassed and has uniquely prepared her to serve the township with a profound commitment to excellence in civic affairs. We, the Women of Essex, are honored to have the opportunity to share this extraordinary moment for a truly extraordinary woman of great distinction. Regardless of who you cast your vote for, I hope you get to know her story for it is indeed a testament to what is possible. For further information about the Women of Essex, visit our website at www.womenofessex.org. Remember to social distance, wash your hands, wear a mask, and remember your possibilities. Thank you so much, Tammy. Congratulations.
Thank you. Stacy Yates Church. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please, and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. My name is Stacy Yates Church. I'm at 22 Post Lane in Livingston, New Jersey, New Jersey. I'm here to offer congratulations to our mother member and now Councilwoman Tammy Williams. I'm the president of the Essex Hudson Chapter of Jack and Jill. And it was with my honor, this wonderful honor, not only Tammy not only being elected to this position of Councilwoman, but as the first African-American Councilwoman of West Orange. As a founding member of our chapter, Councilwoman Williams has been integral to the growth of our children as well as our chapter. And we are extremely proud of our mother member and know that she will give the people of West Orange 110%. You are very lucky to have her working for you and we wish her the very best as well as the rest of the council as she begins her tenure with you. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Douglas Adams. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
How you doing? This is Pastor Doug Adams with at 9 Westover Terrace. And I just wanted to, one, congratulate everyone. I know I'm not on screen, but if you could see me on screen, I'm sitting with my Detroit Lions hat, my Detroit Lions cup. I got Detroit Lion colors on because clearly this is a year when miracles happen. I've been listening to this song from the old days, Loving Spoonful, Do You Believe in Magic? In a young girl's heart. And so I want to first acknowledge and congratulate everyone on the council. Thank you for serving in this past year, which has been an incredibly challenging year to serve. I want to congratulate those who had to campaign and won. Council President Matute Brown, congratulations on your appointment as Council President and the leadership that you'll provide in that area. Councilwoman Castellino, Michelle, it's always a pleasure to talk with you and work with you. I know your heart for the town. And again, you have our support, cooperation, as you continue to try and help us move forward. Reverend Councilman Bill Rutherford, congratulations on your victory. There is a historic contingent to that as well. Although you are not the first man of African descent to sit on the council, it is a historic time for you to be sitting in the seat that you're in. We wish you well and you have our encouragement, prayer, and support in what you're doing. Councilwoman Williams, congratulations. It has been a wonderful journey watching you process through your heart thoughts and intent about running, the process of running, and then being able to celebrate with you your victory. And we just appreciate all the work that you've done in town and the work that you will do in town. This is a historic moment and all of these wonderful, high-capacity women have come on and they've talked about your credentials. They've talked about your accomplishments, your affiliations, and all of the uniqueness of your context. I'd like to take just a moment to also shift gears as I encourage this entire council, but particularly this historic West Orange City Council, as we are for the first time in my 24 years, as of January 19, a majority minority town council. And there may be some out there who voted for you for that reason. There may have been some who voted for you because of the unique context in which you come out of or the the unique relational dynamic from which you have walked through. But I believe the majority of the people look beyond the uniqueness of your context from the standpoint of, yes, it informs your understanding and viewpoint on how you see the world and it gives you a relevance on the council that may have not always been there. But I believe the primary reason that they voted for you is because they looked past your context to your capacity. And they understood that of anyone in this time who would have the ability to allow your context to flavor and to empower your capacity. And so you're not on the council as just a black woman or a black man or a person of color. You are on the council as a high-capacity resident of a high-capacity community looking for high-capacity outcomes. And I believe that you are the people to do it. I believe that Tammy, you have the ability to do that. And many thousands of West Orange residents have voted to affirm that. And so I stand with you in that. Joy Church stands with you in that. And I would love to echo the comments of, and I can't remember her last name because I loved her first name so much, Sabira, in that the appointments that you make, all of you, are critical because the experience that people on a day-to-day basis in West Orange are having are based upon who you align yourself with and how you partner with them. Congratulations. Celebrate today and work tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Michael Pages. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, everyone. This is Michael Pages from Ferris Drive. First, I wanted to extend my apologies to Madam Clerk and Councilwoman Castellino. The holidays are really hard with the chair missing. I've gone to that myself with a few chairs and God bless and Godspeed. I really hope that you and your families are well in this tough time. I want to congratulate the new council president, Matute Brown. It's really wonderful to see the diversity, obviously, Tammy Williams and Mr. Rutherford, Reverend Rutherford. I am a mixed family myself. My wife, my wife is African-American. I am Latino. So it's just great to see the diversity of backgrounds. And it's really exciting to see everyone there working in unison. From my perspective, as I'm sure all of you know, I am, at this point, for the new council members, anyway, I am a resident line member to Cashmont Country Club. Just wanted to check in and see how those dialogues are going, if there was going to be an update on the tail end. I represent a group of about 80 families. Give or take, the holidays took a bite out of our ability to chat, but we're certainly back on the radar now. We wanted to make sure that with the new members of the council that we get their perspective on what their thoughts are with the potential partnership with Lennar and the Country Club and the development. Me being in particular, property line owner. Have there been any additional meetings? How are the open space conversations going with COVID? I'm a person who fully understands the impact of that. I can appreciate where the stack ranks on things, so I'm not blind to that. But you know, if there had been any conversations with the county, how are those going? And more importantly, how can we work in partnership with the council? If there's people that we can email, is there people in the county that we can email? What can we do to not just be a nudge and decide, but really try to work in partnership to make sure that we keep West Orange the way that we think is fit? Again, from our perspective, this information was communicated to us in a very haphazard manner. So we just want to make sure that we are trying to help everybody be as transparent as possible. I hope you well. Again, I'm sorry for the tough news. I wish everybody good luck. And it's great to, we all commend the incredible work that you do on behalf of the town. I've joined the past three, four meetings and God bless you for your patience and your hard work. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Elijah Osborne, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening. It's actually Chavis Osborne. My address is 70 and 1/2 North Willow Street, Montclair, New Jersey. Good evening. I bid you all greetings this evening on this historic day, the swearing in of Tammy Williams as the first African-American female Councilwoman of West Orange. I've known Councilwoman Williams for the past 14 years. She is my forever, excuse me, forever president as she brought me into our sisterhood as a past president of the Pi Theta Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. Tammy has always been in the forefront of all she does, leading with passion, conviction, inclusion, humility, and grace. Tammy is a person that opens doors for all. As my sister, friend, and realtor, Tammy has proven she is able to wear many hats and wear them well. She has guided me in sisterhood and has been there for me to lean on in so many ways. She showed up for me whenever I needed her and in times I didn't realize that I needed her. The residents of West Orange should know that she will continue to do the same as their Councilwoman. She will show up, lean in, lead, act with care and concern on behalf of all constituents. Congratulations to West Orange on this historic day and congratulations to you, Councilwoman Williams.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Bessie Walker. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Yes. Good evening, Madam President and other council members. Happy New to you all and congratulations to everyone for their election to the West Orange Council. My name is Bessie Walker. I live at 75 Vastar Avenue in Newark, New Jersey. I'm a former Councilwoman who served for eight years and then on the Newark Municipal Council. I am currently the president of the Essex County I am currently the president of the Essex County Chair of Federation of Democratic Women. And I stand tonight and, and here to offer congratulations to our sister Tammy Williams for being elected to the West Orange Council as the first black African-American woman. We here in the Essex County Federation of Democratic Women, we believe that she brings a commitment and she will, uh, will enhance and help to, uh, move your uh, community forward by being on that city council. She's a dedicated and committed, um, woman. And we just say we stand ready to support you, Sister Tammy, in all your endeavors. We wish you well and we wish all the other councilwomen. And it's great to see other councilwomen on that, uh, council there. Yay for the women. Uh, we're here to support you, Sister Tammy. Reach out whenever you need us. God bless you all.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Erica Swarengen Blankemcy, Blankemcy. If you can follow the prompt on your screen. Pardon about butchering your name.
Actually, you didn't. You did a great job.
Oh, hey.
So greetings to the citizens and the newly elected council members of the township of West Orange. I am Erica Swarengen Blankemcy and I serve as the first president of the Francis Ellen Watkins Harper Collaborative Club of the National Association of Color Women's Clubs Incorporated, the oldest black women's organization founded in 1896. We recognize what a momentous time today is for Councilwoman Williams and we offer our congratulations to her. Councilwoman Williams, you are now a part of a, a group, a very unique group of firsts. And we, members of the oldest black women's organization, understand better than anyone how much of a trailblazer you will be, just like our great founders and our club's moniker, Francis Ellen Watkins Harper. I leave you with this quote from our first national president, Mary Church Terrell. And so lifting as we climb onward and upward we go. With courage born of success achieved in the past with keen sense of responsibility, we shall continue to assume. We look forward to a future large with promise and hope. And Councilwoman Williams, we know that with you, we have a future large with promise and hope. We look forward to working with you and the citizens of West Orange. And again, congratulations. Continue to lift and continue to climb.
Okay, thank you. And Melinda Lee, if you can follow the prompt on your screen. I think it's actually Melinda Huerta. I think you're on your other.
Hello.
Other account, yeah.
Hi, good evening. Huerta, well, yes, Melinda Lee is my, uh, my husband's name. I just didn't feel like going through the whole legal process of changing my name. Luckily, Melinda Huerta, um, Melinda Huerta, 17 Park Drive South in West Orange. Um, I just wanted to call in quickly, uh, to say congratulations and to express my, you know, excitement for this new council. Uh, very excited to see that our council is starting to look more like our town and very proud to know, um, all of the, the current members, uh, of the town council. And I look forward to the progress that we'll be making, um, together. That's all. Thank you very much and congratulations, everyone. Stay safe and have a happy new year.
Hey, thank you. And next, uh, Justin Goldsman, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, thank you.
Great. Um, good evening, Justin Goldsman, 14 Moran Road, West Orange. Um, in a personal capacity, uh, first off, congratulations, Councilwoman Castellino on reelection for your hard work and your effort to our community and especially your support for all of our small businesses, especially during COVID. And additionally, your longtime family friendship. And from our family's ears, we send our deepest condolences during this time. Councilwoman Williams, congrats on your historic election, surely the first, but not the last. Uh, we know you will serve our community with conviction and a commitment to justice that has long been much needed in town. Um, Councilwoman McCartney, I'd also like to thank you and wish you a very happy new year and look forward to working with you, um, and the rest of the council as we move forward throughout the year. In an organizational capacity, I have the honor to serve as the Chair of Our Revolution Essex County, representing 2,500 progressive voters and activists in Essex County and several hundred here in West Orange. In 2018, we were proud to endorse and help elect now Council President Matute Brown. And this year we were proud to endorse and get out the vote in COVID-friendly ways for Councilman Rutherford. Uh, we look forward, uh, to working together to push a progressive agenda locally and make West Orange the town we know it can be. While we often think of bold and progressive policy change as being only possible at a federal level, there's so much we can do locally here in West Orange. We look forward to a healthy debate and policy discussion over progressive policy to truly transform the lives of all our residents in West Orange, working at all levels of government. And we look forward to working in partnership with all of you on the council to ensure we be bold in policy and we truly imagine what is possible in town. Congratulations, everyone. Looking forward to a happy and healthy new year and to seeing you all in person soon. Stay safe, wear a mask and get tested. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. And do we have anyone else as a final call for speaking for public comment? Using the raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen. Hey, Susan A., if you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Sue, Susan Anderson, 20 Colony Drive East.
Okay, you're all set. Thank you.
I just wanted to say a big thumbs up to Councilwoman Tammy Williams. I'd like to echo Pastor Adams and say that while Tammy may be the first black woman to be elected to the West Orange Town Council, she is neither a token nor a novelty. Her experience, accomplishments, and as Pastor Adams said so well, her high capacity make her more than qualified to sit in that seat. So congratulations, Tammy. I'd also like to extend congratulations to, um, Councilwoman Michelle Castellino. I've worked with Michelle. I've always enjoyed working with her. She is very, very fair and thorough. And I'd like to congratulate her on her reelection. Also, um, Councilman Bill Rutherford, who's new to West Orange politics. Um, as they say, change is good and congratulations to him in his new role.
Thank you. And, um, I did see Mr. Puglisi on before, but he dropped off. He may had have to, um, I'm sure he's very busy. So just in case, if Ms. Puglisi, if you're there, if you can re-raise your hand. He is not here, but I do see Sandra Mordecai, if you can, uh, follow the prompt on the screen, please.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. It's Sandra Mordecai, 516 Pleasant Valley Way. Um, I'd just like to call in, first of all, to say a happy new year to everybody and to thank you for all your hard work during this very challenging year. Congratulations to Council President, New, New Council President Cindy Matute. Congratulations to Councilwoman Castellino on your reelection to the council. And of course, congratulations to Councilwoman, Councilwoman Williams on her historic election to the West Orange Council as the first black woman on the township council. I wish you all, all the best. And of, of course, special congratulations to Pastor William Rutherford. I'm happy to have been a part of the team, which works really hard to get you on the council. I'm looking forward to your service and your vision for all of West Orange, but in particular to our downtown West Orange. And again, congrats to all of you. Please stay safe. And, uh, best wishes for a great year.
Hey, thank you. And that is, uh, it for the public comment. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so very much, Lauren. You make that seem so simple.
Thank you.
I certainly appreciate it. Um, I just wanted to open the floor.
Madam President, I'm sorry, we had someone else raise their hand at the very last moment.
Absolutely.
Sure. Maritza Brown, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I, I was remiss. I just joined and I just wanted to say congratulations to our new, uh, Chair, our new President.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but can we just have your name and address for the record?
Maritza Brown, 5 Linden Court, West Orange, New Jersey.
Thank you.
So congratulation again, uh, Madam Cindy Matute Brown. Uh, Bill Rutherford, you know, I am so excited that, uh, you made it. And, um, we could not be more blessed. Uh, Tammy Williams, congratulations to you as well. I know that jointly you will make some major differences. Uh, West Orange is in need of it and I'm so pleased to have been a part of your election process.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and I think that is now final call, last call, raise your hand, anybody? No, okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you once again, Lauren. And at this point, now that, um, public comment is done, it is completed. I'd like to open the floor to my council colleagues if they would like to respond. And I will start, um, with Councilwoman Castellino.
Thank, thank you, Council President. Uh, let me know if you can't hear me. I've been having a little, uh, reception issues here. So am I good right now?
You're good.
Good, beautiful. Okay, um, let me start off with, uh, Rosary Morelli. Rosary, thank you for being a good neighbor. Uh, you've been wonderful through this pandemic, uh, working with the community. Keeping in touch with so many of our seniors and bringing us valuable information. And as you know, it's so important as we go through the winter months for everyone to keep in touch, to keep on that phone chain and just keep working those phones to keep everyone, um, in, informed and, um, more importantly, to give each other company, um, during, during the winter months. And we're going to get, we're going to get through this pandemic. I, I know we're going to see the, the bright side of it. Michael, uh, great to hear from you tonight and, and thank you for your well wishes. Uh, I've been working with, uh, our new council president, um, Crestmont. We are still waiting, uh, back for appraisals. I had, um, uh, had got a recent update from the mayor. So once we get those appraisals back, um, on the property itself, we'll be able to move forward and see where we could go, um, with hopefully figure out how to purchase it for open space. So, but we need the appraisals back first and to get those dollar amounts in. And for anyone on the line who may be wondering about Rock Spring, because that was another open item that we were going, uh, when I had discussion back in December. The administration is getting ready to move forward and to update us on, uh, any future proposals. So we'll be looking forward to that. And our new council president will be working diligently, diligently with the, the mayor as the next few months, uh, come. So, um, we look forward to those, uh, two items. And thanks to everyone who was on the call, um, to, for the great well wishes. Excited to work with our new council. Looking forward to a great year and appreciate every, again, every, everyone's support and, and kind words. And, and thank you for, uh, so many to, uh, Doc, Dr. Harley, you know, Jase, the CJ Morgan Foundation, just close and personal to, to my heart. CJ, my son Joe, we're, we're good friends through high school and, uh, what a beautiful families. That's always easy to support. Uh, Justin Goldman, we, we, you know, we've known each other for a long time. And, uh, you know, I just appreciate everybody's well wishes for my family in this, this really tough time. So thank you all for all your thoughts and well wishes, um, during this time. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino. Councilwoman McCartney.
Council President, thank you. Before I, um, speak, I really, uh, I wanted to say that I do believe that Michelle had, um, served in a stellar capacity as council president. And she is continuing to be stoic, but I would ask that we all have a moment of silence, please, for her, what, uh, her mom and Karen's father and also Fatima in the clerk's office, her mom as well. So just a moment of silence for, at perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. I too wanted to join everyone, uh, that, uh, the well wishers that were out there. There are numerous people. It is a pleasure and I would like to wish everyone a happy and healthy new year as well and our newly elected, uh, officials. It made me think that there are many research studies on stress and even more so published now during this pandemic. But, and one of the common denominators in those studies is to experience something new to alleviate that stress. So with this new council, I'd like to think that this is our something new and that we are off to a great start. Might be a new level of stress. I don't know, but I'm hoping that, uh, we, this is a, a, a good start to the, to this new year. Uh, I wanted to thank Joe Fagan too, uh, as a reminder of the crimes of opportunity that we hear about. It was a public service announcement for all of us to be cognizant. If you see something, say something. And, uh, that goes hand in hand with the comment Rosary Morelli made about, uh, I felt like her comments, um, about neighbors helping neighbors was definitely a public service announcement, not to us, but everyone in our community. Uh, so thank you for the, for that. I'm kind of, uh, Mr. Pages, uh, is, I know, very concerned about Crestmont. I wanted to assure him that the Open Space Commission continues to meet even during this pandemic. Uh, virtually, though they did have one outdoor meeting back in September. And there are no pending applications before zoning or planning. The council voted unanimously as well as the Open Space Commission. They voted unanimously for the recommendations for the appraisals. So we are all anxiously awaiting for more information about that. I wanted to congratulate Melinda Lee also on her win. Um, and thank you, how, very respectful to call in, uh, to the council. And to Justin, it's always full of ideas, always moving forward as we're all trying to do. So please keep in touch and, um, and I look forward really to working with everyone, um, this coming year. And Kabir Myers, I wanted to make the comment to Kabir also, um, how much I appreciate her advocacy. And I'm wondering that this may be something, Council President, you could look at. I know she was looking at CBGB funds. Um, we have never appropriated, or not that I know of, have appropriated money for, um, rent, uh, for any type of red, rent subsidy. But I'm wondering if that's something the municipal alliance could look at. If there are grants available or something that, that might be put on the agenda for the next municipal alliance meeting. Think that's, thank you.
Thank you, Council McCartney, for, um, those responses. Um, Councilman Rutherford.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Council President. I'd like to, uh, begin by thanking everyone that, uh, called in to, uh, congratulate, uh, each of us or any of us. The well wishes are certainly needed, uh, and certainly appreciated. Wanted to respond to some of the comments. Uh, I won't respond to all, all of them. Obviously did not re- require a response. Mr. Fagan talked about crimes of opportunity. We do see some patterns, uh, with the, with some of those crimes and how people, uh, at certain points of the year look for, uh, cars that are either left unlocked or left running. Uh, and so we are certainly, I'm certainly aware of that and, um, you can count on me, uh, as well as the rest of the council, I'm sure, to work with, um, our law enforcement officers to, uh, identify whatever resources we can apply to help stop some of the patterns associated with the crimes of opportunity. Ms. Morelli, um, spoke about the seniors in particular, but, um, being a good neighbor is something for each of us, whether our neighbors are seniors or not. Uh, but in particular for seniors, and I do want to echo what, uh, Councilwoman, um, Castellino said. Thank you, Ms. Morelli, for being a good neighbor. There are some resources out there, um, that are not necessarily aligned with the, uh, the governing body, uh, the township of West Orange that may be able to help in that regard. As many of you know, I'm the pastor of a church and so there are resources out there to help with seniors. Uh, and I will be, uh, reaching out to you to speak to you directly about that. Kabira Myers talked about the rent leveling board, I think it's a travesty that the board hasn't met and we certainly do need to make sure that they meet ASAP. So anything I can do to be helpful in that regard, you can count on my assistance. The CJ Morgan Foundation was brought up, I, I am just moved by the outpouring of support from the West Orange community for not just the family, but for the work of the foundation as well. I know the Morgans, both through U-PAC as well as my fraternity, and so they can count on my support as well. Mr. Pages talked about the Crestmont Country Club potential development. And he asked that we state our position or give an update, I can't give an update, I don't have an update, but I can tell you that I am not for cutting down trees and destroying the topography to build more housing. I've said this during the campaign and I, for those that are watching now or that may watch this later, that has not changed. I, I am going to be very critical of every single residential development in town because I think there are some issues with regard to how many housing, how many housing units we have, how many people we put into the schools and how it affects our taxes. So that is my position on Crestmont and I'm looking forward to learning more about what's going on over there. Melinda Werthe, I want to congratulate you as well, thank you first for calling in, but Linda and I campaigned together. And I am super excited for your win as well and looking forward to seeing what you will do on the Board of A. I think that's it for my comments, yeah, that's it for me, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmen, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Council President, so by virtue of my last name, I will probably always go last. And in that stead, I will not repeat the comments from my council colleagues. So what I want to say to those who have taken the time and opportunity to zoom in this evening, especially those who offered salutations and warm greetings on my behalf as the first African American black woman elected to the West Orange Township Council, I graciously say, thank you. But to all those others who called in with any type of concern, I want to say that we hear you and you have already heard from my council colleagues their sentiments, so we will govern ourselves accordingly. With that, I want to just say, as a council colleague, we will do the best that we can to serve well the residents of West Orange. We will listen to all of your concerns, we hear you. And it's this year in 2021 that I speak on my behalf and on behalf of my council colleagues, we will hear you, we will respond to you and we will do all that we can to govern ourselves accordingly. So with that, I wish all the residents of West Orange, New Jersey and beyond, this year 2021 will be our best year yet and we look forward to the continued progress of West Orange, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and I will be brief because I know that we want to get through the matter of the agenda. First and foremost to all who called to congratulate all of the new elections, our council members and the reelection for our council member, Castellino, thank you so very much for taking the time. It's always great to welcome your comments, it's certainly appreciated. Thank you. I, I did want to also thank Ms. Myers, Kabira Myers, for bringing up the rent control, this is something that, the rent control board, this is something that I looked into and the board, the council recently re-adopted so that we can continue working through this very important ordinance. I know I have had conversations with Ms. Myers, she is my appointee on the rent leveling board and I encourage all of my council colleagues as soon as you're able to provide an appointment for that board to please do so. The reason the meeting hasn't happened is because I think there is some confusion as to whether or not they, they can meet as a board if there is no complaint to the board. Mr. Kaser and, and I have had the discussions and look forward to coming together for a meeting with a board once totally comprised. I did ask Ms. Myers to hold off on a meeting until our new council members had the opportunity to make an appointment so that we can have a collective discussion on what the understanding of the ordinance is, what their roles and responsibilities are and if there is a need to draft a separate advisory ordinance or, or ad hoc committee to have these meetings, then I want council to consider that as well. But it's on our radar, Mr. Kaser, do you want to jump in?
I certainly think that, that the board can meet. And I, I had the discussion some days ago with Mr. Smeraldo, who's the, in charge of that board at this point. And I think we're in agreement that we, that it can meet, I think it should meet, be advertised meeting, open public meeting. And as we had discussed, I think that we can probably do some things to, to get the word out to tenants about their rights. And while the, the board itself has somewhat limited jurisdiction, you know, I think I, I would agree that it would be a good idea to get on the website some more things about the rights that tenants have and so forth, and there's, there are ways to do that. So it's just a matter of, you know, going through that process and getting it done. And I'll, I'll be helping with that to the extent that I can.
Thank you so very much, Ken, I know you were very helpful trying to navigate those waters, but in, in part, Ms. Kabira, the reason that we didn't schedule a meeting sooner is that I wanted to provide the opportunity for all of the council members to have their appointments so that we, you know, go through this process collectively. But thank you for bringing that to the attention of the council and the public as well, incredibly important and necessary at this time. Mr. Pages, I, I sent you what I thought was a chat asking for your email address because I am very impressed and, and very happy to see your continued advocacy for whatever may happen at Crestmont. And as such, I am a firm believer if, if those who are looking to help solve a problem can have an opportunity to have a voice at the table, I am always willing to consider an appointment as I need an appointment for the Open Space Commission. So please do send me an email at cmattoobrownwestorange.org so we can have that discussion. But certainly looking forward to it. Justin Goldman, you are quite the inspiration for, for so many of us. I agree that it is, it is so necessary in this day and age to have those bold policy discussions and go beyond the policy discussions. I'm looking forward to revisiting the Medicare for All resolution that you presented, particularly in today's, in light of today's COVID epidemic pandemic. We certainly need to, to discuss policies that are going to help push that needle. I know that locally, all we can do is, is support, but our support for progressive policies to our elected officials in Trenton and then beyond is, is necessary. So thank you for always staying vigilant and, and always being active in progressive policies. And for Ms. Rosary Morelli, thank you for always bringing to the attention, so very poignant advice for us. I, I will look for that article, I think it was very relevant. Some of the things that you mentioned, I had not thought of, so I certainly appreciate that. And, and unfortunately, my pre-existing conditions keep me home. I try to assist the food pantry through Amazon deliveries of diapers, if you will, or food directly to them by Aaron. So it is a good reminder to maintain good neighbor policy, so certainly appreciate that. I think that everyone else who spoke spoke to congratulate, so thank you once again to those who spoke to congratulate. Looking forward to a very productive year with our new council members. It's gonna be a good year, I'm sure. Our host Lauren had to step away momentarily, unfortunately, there is no screen share, that's why you're, you're not seeing the agenda. But council, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, we are now at the close of our public meeting.
Right, I'm gonna review the consent agenda. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting December 15. I just wanted to explain to the new council members, as I go through the consent agenda, if you look at your agenda, you'll see numbers two through, I believe, six. They have little stars next to them and that, all of those items fall under the consent agenda. So I'll review the consent agenda at each meeting. And then, as I review each item, the council says consent, basically approving that item. Obviously, if you have any questions, you can certainly interrupt and then, you know, ask them. So report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. There are no bills this week, resolutions, Council President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, so there are some questions on resolutions that I have and then I will ask my, I'm, I'm not pulling any, I do have questions and items for discussion. So that item is letter A, Resolution 121, I have questions on. Item G, Resolution 721, which is the community block grant program. I know Councilman Rutherford also had questions on that, I didn't know if you were gonna pull that. And also item I, Resolution 921, to discuss the accepting the grant for the hazardous discharge site remediation. I'm not pulling them, but would like discussion particularly since that was a late addition to the agenda and I'm not sure if my council colleagues had the opportunity to read the lengthy exhibit that was attached to it. So it'll be item A for a question, discussion on G and discussion on I. Do any of my council colleagues have items they would like pulled? Councilman Rutherford.
I would like to pull Resolution 721 for further discussion. I do have a question also on Resolution 521.
Okay.
All right. Does anyone else, any of my other colleagues, questions or discussions? Are we pulling anything else?
Yeah, Council President, I don't need anything pulled, but I think we, you know, should go over the list on the block grant development like you stated and Councilman did as well. Some of the project, I, I know we had a public comment on Ms. Myers, which I was gonna address at this point in time. And I'm not sure if Ms. Lepore is available, but probably Mr. Gross could go over each item, so. And folks know what the grant's all about and, and what the, the location of it as well.
Ms. Lepore is on the call.
Thank you.
Great.
Any other resolutions being pulled this evening?
No, Council President, but I do appreciate, I expected John to speak about the Resolution 121 or 221. Thank you.
Okay, so Madam Clerk, since these aren't being pulled, but questions and discussion, should we start with item A?
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the one Resolution 7-21 that was pulled.
Okay.
Okay, so that would be first, who, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. And now, Council President, 1-21, Resolution authorizing the temporary budget.
Yes, there is Mr. Gross. I, I, I had, and this is something that does come up this time of year and I'm just gonna put this on the radar for the legal services bill, the salary and wages and operating expenses. That is for the township attorney legal service, correct? Or is this lumped in with bond counsel or any other counsel?
Salary and wage is for, there are, there are, I think we're down to two, we're, we're down to two people who are actually employees or treated as employees, so that, that's for them and then all other services are in the OE.
Okay, and are those services having anything to do with litigation matters?
Sure.
Or, yes, okay. I, I would like, and I know I did not get to you in time to request, but, and I'll follow up with an email, but I would like to see a breakdown if, by docket number or, or case matter, what those litigation matters are.
We can do that.
Thank you. And also, go ahead, I'm sorry.
This, this particular resolution and the next one, as, as you've come to here and everyone will come to here, there, there are, there are action resolutions that, that the council takes and there's also housekeeping matters the council takes. These happen to be in, in, in the category of housekeeping. By definition, we have to have a budget in order to operate, it's the first meeting of the year. So what you see before you is a portion of the 2021 budget intended just to cover us for the expenses as we project they might be in, in, in the first couple or few months. They're not really relevant, the amounts are not really relevant to a, any particular budget or budget proposal. Again, they're just a stopgap amount to, to keep us operating. Just, and again, the, 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 the next, someone asked about the other, the, the next resolution I'll just mention, that's the cash management plan we adopted every year, it's required in order for us, it doesn't change dramatically from year to year. And it, it is in order just to set our policies of how we handle cash. As you, as you, I'm sure you'll remember as vividly as I do, this past year, we had a great year with no budget, no audit comments. And, and part of that is because we, we do follow, you know, these aren't just pieces of paper, we do, we do follow them. And, you know, it's important that they get adopted, but they are pretty much housekeeping at this point.
Yeah, I, I know.
Notwithstanding, I'll get, I'll, I would certainly will get you, you know, the information on legal that you want.
And I, and I also say, you know, I always like to discuss questions that I have because perhaps my council colleagues or someone in the public may have the same questions looking over the documentation that we have. The other question I had for the central insurance, the health, is that claims, it's 2,562,985, is that projected claims or those already anticipated? Anticipated, if they're projected, they are anticipated, but.
Yeah, we're only five days into the year, we've spent about a half a million dollars so far. But, but that, but those numbers, again, that just goes back to my, my, my explanation of what it is, it's not really related to any specific purchases directly, they're not, they're, they're not lining up. It's, it's strictly just for us to meet our statutory obligation to have a budget in place.
Okay, and because I, I brought up the health insurance, you know that that is my, my shtick every, every year, a few times a year, even just between you and I, when we have these discussions, I am hopeful, bringing that up, I, I want to say that I am hopeful that we are looking at a bid process for our broker. And that is a discussion that council can have at a later time, but I just not gonna put that out there since I brought up the health insurance. Oh, and then the last, on the last page, there was something that read pending retro. What is, is that for, is that for time off, paid leave, what is that?
It is for, it is in anticipation of contracts yet to be settled.
And how many are those yet to be settled?
Well, two, two. Everything else is, is, we're settled, you know, we've settled everything else, they're, they're not all been paid out yet, so.
Okay, and just simply, well, it's not part of this agenda, so. Okay, and just simply, well, it's not part of this agenda, so I won't bring that up at this time. And then, okay, so that was a question I had in that regard. Can you discuss, Councilman Rutherford pulled 721? Can you discuss, or is that perhaps Lenny can discuss?
If Lenny's on the call, I'll defer to him. I mean, I know generally about it, but if Lenny's on the call, he'll be able to give specifics that I can't.
I'm Ms. Lepore, good to see you. Happy New Year.
Good evening and Happy New Year to everybody. This is an annual grant program that the township submits. We are eligible for block grant monies. Those are federal funds from the Department of Housing and Urban Development and they are administered by Essex County. You will see here that there are grant requests from two service organizations in West Orange as well as three grant requests from the township for some roadway infrastructure improvements. Typically, we have placed the service organizations in a priority of one and two with the township grants following.
Good.
Councilman, did you have questions?
Sure, so it appears, at least based on my understanding of this resolution attached to the grants, that we may not get the $700,000 or so that we're looking for. Is there, is there a already structured crafted mechanism for handling how we would prorate these amounts if we don't get the full amount?
We will be meeting, the administration will be meeting with the county. Usually this month or perhaps this year, it'll be February. We'll review what we think, or they will review with us what they think their, their funding will be from, from Washington. Just so you know, even though we're applying now for 2021, we still have not received 2020 monies. So I think they'll be trying to make the best guess that they can of what we will receive in 2021. Probably the one that would agree, I would probably agree to a reduction of all three of the infrastructure projects with probably the one that would get the most reduction would be the last one, which was, is our biggest one.
Is it too late to include another West Orange organization in this application process?
Other, other than it would have to be in by Friday, that would be the biggest constraint. If you want to give me a call tomorrow, we can discuss that. I will check with the county to make sure that even, even if they submit, that we would be following with a, an amended resolution if it does come to that at the next meeting so that we could have a priority that would really reflect all the applications. But right now, other than time not being on our side, that would be the biggest difficulty.
And last question for me, if we have not yet received 2020 monies, is it likely that this will be significantly cut? Or is, is the pool of money from which CDBG comes, is that segregated and safe? Can we, you know, is it reliable?
I, I think we can expect what we will receive this year. I'm not saying that we won't receive what we anticipate getting for 2020. It's just, I think, Washington politics.
Got it. Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
And Council President. Well, thank you. So if we are going to discuss adding another organization, I would like to know what, Bill, what you're thinking of, of the organization to be discussed?
Sure, it is certainly preliminary. I just had a phone call today with regard to a particular challenge that a church in town is having. Meeting some of the requirements the town has with regard to zoning. They are longstanding supporters of the town. They provide community service in the, with youth with disabilities and in other spaces. Without actually speaking with the, I get permission to put the name out there. I wouldn't want to do it publicly without saying that first, but, and perhaps I'm wrong for not doing that, so forgive me. This is my first council meeting.
No, that's okay.
But, yeah, they are a longstanding church in town that has done a tremendous amount of work right alongside the township to serve West Orange residents.
Thank you.
Councilman Castelino?
Yeah, Mr. Lepore, just for our new councilwoman and councilman, the criteria for this grant, because is in the location of either the business and organization come into effect, or the street that we actually utilize these block grants for? I mean, is that, what's the criteria?
There are, there are means testing and that means testing is based upon income. It's income by census tract. Within census tract, there are census blocks. There's a countywide population at which low and moderate income is determined. I think that's right around, just a little under 30% of the population of the county is considered low and moderate income. So if any of the census blocks within our census tracts has a lower moderate income percentage equal to or greater to than what the county is, those, those areas are eligible. I can provide the council with a map that, that shows that. Generally, most of them are, I'll say, on the eastern quadrant or eastern quadrant of the town, along Main Street, Franklin Avenue, in, along the Valley Road corridor. There are some others spread a little bit further west, but you will see that Williams Street and Ashwood Terrace happen to be, although you wouldn't know from, from what I've submitted, they're in the same census block and tract as, as are Wheeler Street and Kingsley Street. They're each in the same census block and tract, not the same as William and Ashwood Terrace. So there is a means testing here, which is based on, on income and percentage of low and moderate income residents that live in those districts.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Lepore.
Thank you, Ms. Lepore. Yes.
One more question. So Lynn, I know that you were on the call before when we were talking about basically rent subsidy. That necess, this CD, CBGB money would not necessarily meet that criteria then?
There are, there are other programs other than service agencies and public facility improvements that I will reach out to the county and ask them about assistance for renters.
Great, thank you.
Don't know if that's, if we're eligible for that, but certainly we'll find out.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lepore. And then the last discussion, I wanted to just have an overview. I don't know if that's also Mr. Lepore or John Gross on Resolution 921, which is the grant from the hazardous discharge site remediation. I wanted just, you, just to give a brief overview so that our new council colleagues understand what this is and why it's applied to 18 Central Avenue.
Okay, I will go first and then if John wants to add anything, he's more than welcome. I think as many of you know, we've designated an area of redevelopment along Central Avenue and Mitchell Street. We do have one redevelopment project that is, is up and occupied. The town has purchased other, or has not purchased, but has acquired other parcels known as the Selecto Flash parcel, which is just to the west of the current Harvard Press housing development. And then just to the west of that is, is another parcel, an abandoned building that we own known as the Biddleman property. Those are also in our redevelopment area. They were also in a Brownfield, Brownfields area where we're, where we're eligible for grants from the state in those HDSRF hazardous discharge site remediation fund. Those grants are eligible in those tracts. We've gotten several grants already for both parcels. This is a grant that we applied for. It was applied for by resolution of the council. We had an initial notice that we did receive the grant. That was, grant was accepted by resolution of the council and now we're formally entering into an agreement with the New Jersey Economic Development Agency who administers those grants. And so this is really the third step in the process for receiving one of the grants. And this is for the removal of an underground storage tank that is currently on the Selecto Flash property.
Thank you for that. Did any of my council colleagues have any follow-up questions?
Not, not a follow-up, but I would, I'm really just pleased to move forward with that whole Central Avenue. You know, we have the project that is already complete and leased. So what we are looking to do is improve the rest of that site, which will help the whole valley area and the Valley Arts and Luna Stage and the Arts Council and everything and the businesses along that corridor. So definitely looking forward to cleaning that space up, so make those improvements. Thank you, Lynn.
You're welcome.
Absolutely, thank you.
Council President, I need to call for a motion on 7-21, the Resolution Essex County Community Block Grant Program, year 2021.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, hold on one second. Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilwoman, I did it again, Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
And this is to pull the ordinance?
No, this is to vote on the ordinance that was pulled, 7-21, the CDBG. Did you have any further questions?
Yes, I do.
I'm sorry, I know, but I jumped, I jumped the gun, so Councilman Rutherford did pull it. I thought it was discussed.
My question can't really be answered tonight. We're going to have to do some work on that. So if I have to vote, I'm going to vote no.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Mathieu Brown?
Yes.
The next agenda item is ordinances on first reading, 2626-21, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7 Traffic subsection 7-19 through streets and subsection 7-21.2, multiway stops near schools, playgrounds, and youth recreation facilities of the revised general ordinances of the Township of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So moved?
Second.
Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
Yes.
Okay. Do we want to ask Lynn to just discuss this or just explain?
On first reading.
I know, we always talk about it first.
Ms. Lepore, you still there?
I'm still here.
Thank you.
This, this is going to create an always stop along Forest Avenue at Ellis Street. This is at the southerly or in southwesterly corner of the Redwood School. It's also adjacent to the playground apparatus that we have or that the town and the board has at that location of the property. So we're looking to make it a safer intersection for residents and children and students to use particularly for crossing. Under the statutes of the State of New Jersey, about 15 years ago, they made it easier to designate stop intersections and always stop intersections on, on streets that are contiguous with a school and an intersection that's within 500 feet of the school on those contiguous streets.
Thank you for your indulgence, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lepore. And council, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, can we move on now to pending matters?
Yes.
New matters, council discussion? Council colleagues, this time I just wanted to do a very brief recap on some of the things that I think, I want to, not I think, but I, we should keep on our radar moving forward and if there is also anything that you would like to bring up and, and discuss at some point, I'd certainly welcome that as well. I made a to-do list, if you will, for myself, of things that we discussed last year and probably the year before that too, and are still working, as we know, government works very slow. I've learned that very quickly here. And so the, the one thing I am still going to continue to press our administration, I am looking for council colleague support on is the investment and it is an investment in a town planner or economic developer. I think that there are a lot of, not I think, there are a lot of developments, residential developments that are on the horizon and there is an overreliance, as we taxpayers all know, on residential tax revenue. We need to create a different path for our residents by seeking out more commercial revenue. So I want to please ask that, that you consider supporting the full-time town planner or economic developer. That is a conversation I, I want us all to have. Also, while I spoke about the review of the local assistance ordinance earlier, we're going to do away with that because it's defunct and not necessary. The rent control ordinance, I will, I'm not sure if you still have it in your email, but I'll just send it out again for you to review and also consider who your council liaison's appointments will be. And also, consider having a town hall discussion, if you will, similar to the one that we had on a building more racially inclusive communities, just to get the awareness out for the residents that there are protections, there are resources here. I think it's also an opportunity for us to learn what, what they are and what our ability to provide those resources are to the community. I also want to bring back the discussion regarding ordinance number 2595-20, which is the medicinal marijuana dispensary to discuss. I know that it was excluded from the master plan, but I, I believe that it is a discussion that we should continue to move that forward. Also, the ordinances on public contract reform, we discussed that January 7th of 2020. I, there was very little momentum, if you will, but I, I will send those out again and I'd like to discuss the ordinance on public contract reform. I feel that it makes good public governance to exclude those who contribute to campaigns from accepting bids or awarding bids to those who contribute to, to our campaigns. Also, the Medicare for All Resolution, HR 1384 Act, that we discussed on February 4th, 2020, Dustin Goldman, and I give a date because since these were, at the time, we were all on the dais, we had that discussion and it is recorded, so I'm, I'm giving the dates so that our new council colleagues or if we want to revisit those parts of the conversation, we can go back to those council meeting videos and review them then. The Medicare for All Resolution was the HR 1384 Act. Also, I spoke to the mayor and we're going to have a discussion just to talk about where we are with Rock Spring. Thank you, Councilwoman Castelino, for your efforts on the Edison Law prison discussion with the developer, Diaz there. Also, moving public works. I don't know where we are with moving public works, but for our new council colleagues, the need to move public works is, is, goes hand in hand with Phase 2 of development of prison, the downtown area, and those are the town, townhouses? Development, I believe, their townhouses, yes. And so I want to know where we are with that. We just got an update from the Selecto Flash property, where we are, thank you, Mr. Lepore for that. And I also want to have a discussion, and I know I'm loading you with this, but this is all to be able to digest and, you know, think about so that we can have further discussion later. I was not in. I was not in support of the mayor's State of the Town address having and and maybe this time it has to be different. I know that it is a fundraiser for the West Orange Chamber of Commerce. And and the West Orange Chamber of Commerce does wonderful things, but when when people have to pay to attend the State of the Town address, to me, represents exclusion to those who can't A, take the day off or afford to pay for to listen to our town address, our mayor address the township. So as a council, I want us to have that discussion. When I had the discussion with the mayor last year, he said that that was something that the Chamber of Commerce has traditionally done. And he was not comfortable just stepping away from that without having that discussion with the Chamber of Commerce. But I think that is a discussion as a as a governing body that we are to ensure if we're talking about building more inclusive communities, that this is also a part of that. And that was, oh, and this one is for Mr. Gross. I would like to have sooner than later timeframe as to when we're going to start reviewing the budget for 2021, what that calendar looks like. I know that there's a lot of things up in the air and a lot of things do not depend on the municipality simply because of what happens in, I think, Mr. Lepore said it nicely, the politics in in DC, but also here in Trenton. But just wanted to put that on your radar, Mr. Gross.
Council President, just to just to be clear, we just we just received the amended dates for this year. And under the amended dates, we have to have the budget to the council by March 1. And it's the they're they're looking for it to be adopted no later than March 31. Which which would put us at a a budget hearing somewhere in early to mid or not adopted, I'm sorry, introduced.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, right? That couldn't ever happen.
Approval, the terminology, it's called, it's approval for the first one, and that's by 331. And so that would put us and for you to look for a a date somewhere early to mid March. Obviously, earlier is better, always better than later.
Yes, absolutely. So thank you. Thank you for that.
And of course, if we can get it to you earlier, we certainly will. But but that's that's the statutory days. We will meet the statutory dates at at worst case scenario, but if we can get it to you earlier, we will.
Wonderful. Council colleagues, that was my to do list, just to follow up on things that were, you know, still pending from my perspective. Obviously, I'm sharing it with you because I am seeking for council support on these matters to move them forward. If we are to move in the direction of of progress and doing things differently and more expediently, then we have to have those conversations sooner than later. Yes, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman. And it looks like we're set up for an ambitious year. So that is great. I just want to, I'm not not going to get into the whole list now, but the the one list. And I guess Mr. Gross is really going to have to steer us because the reason why we had put off moving forward was because obviously of our budget restraints and concerns. But, you know, early last year, we almost hired the economic developer and had to put that on the back burner. So I really like to see us, you know, move forward with that sooner than later, as soon as Mr. Gross can give us the green light. I think it'd be helpful for the township and it's, you know, something we almost moved forward with last year. But again, I I know Mr. Gross will have to give us the green light with that. And I just wanted to make that comment, but very, you know, very you know, very supportive of of looking forward to the new year. So thank you for mapping that out for us.
No surprise. Thank you, Councilwoman.
No.
Thank you. I wanted to also thank you for this recap. You know, everything sounds very familiar. You know, I did not support the full time planner when that came up in our budget. I'm not sure my vote, I don't even think I supported this with the economic developer. But I do see that, you know, I guess it's all in the timing and we're still in the midst of COVID. But if there was an economic developer that could help us market our town, then I guess that's, you know, that I would definitely support. But again, that would be all in the timing as we're moving forward. I wanted to, I definitely look forward on listening to the plans on Rock Spring Golf Club and on the Edison projects and and what the plan is for Green Acres and development there. And I wanted to just tell you that, you know, this would have been the meeting that I did talk about the chamber State of the Town address, and the chamber is postponing that event. What we were discussing for the past two months, because I chair that, is either Facebook Live or a WebEx type of format so that everyone could be invited and watch such a video with the schools closed. Now, we honor how many students. The mayor, it it just doesn't feel appropriate right now to be talking about, no one wants to rehash 2020. And we're not really sure, you know, where we are with 2021 because the numbers, COVID numbers are are just holding too steady for any comfort. So that there is not going to be a State of the Town address, you know, typically during the January, February of the of this year. But the conversation was about having, like I said, Facebook Live or WebEx for everyone to be able to tune in. So I think we will move forward with that kind of a a format if and when the timing is right. So thank you. Actually, what I wanted to put on public pending matters, and I guess it was really just a question for the administration, is the status of the curfew at O'Connor Park. Now, we had residents and the conditions that we heard about going on up there. And if anything has been put in place. Now, the chief is not on this call this evening, but I didn't know if you had any updates on the status. Curfew status.
Reach out to the chief.
For safety measures.
Yeah. Excuse me, Council President, and also reach out to Mr. Keogh because he had put in for a proposal on that. And I don't know, Mr. Gross, if you want to comment, because I think that had to do something with your budget as well.
I I really, I do not have an update on that. Perhaps Mr. Sayers does. I have not been had any conversations with the chief recently on on where that is. Perhaps Mr. Sayers does.
With regard to what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you were saying.
Thanks, Jack. It was about O'Connor Park and the status of the curfew and safety measures that would be, could be put in place for the neighborhood.
Oh, yeah. I I don't think that's been put into place yet, but I can talk to the chief and I'll I'll get you some information on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Did any of our new council colleagues have any anything for new discussion?
Council President, I'm sorry, your sound just got really wonky for a second. You sound not, you sound muffled.
You, how, can you hear me now? I feel like a commercial.
Can you speak again?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. That's better. Thanks.
I I felt like I sounded like a commercial. Okay, Madam Clerk, I think we have come to the end of our agenda.
Yes, we have. So is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Oh, my, such enthusiasm. My goodness. Ball in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you so much, everyone, for attending. I see that we still have several of our residents listening. I certainly appreciate you hanging on and listening to our discussion at the end as well as throughout the entire meeting. And to my council colleagues, it's going to be a busy year, but I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you for your patience if I stumbled this evening as my first tryout for a council. And and for your patience with the council liaison appointments, this will be revisited. So I certainly appreciate your patience and collaboration in that.
And I I know we have officially adjourned. I know we haven't hit the gavel as yet. But I just want to give commendations to Council President Cindy Matu Brown for executing a very well meeting, first meeting of January 2021. You did an exceptional job. It is 9:34 and we are ending the first meeting of the year. Thank you.
This is going to be more like there's going to be more like this in the future.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. This is to inform everyone that when I end the meeting, we'll end for those both on and off screen. And no other business will be conducted. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Good night. Good job, Stan. Great.